It is now six o'clock, so we will call the board to the Water Works Board and Town Council meeting for September twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-one. We stand for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Robyn.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Conley.
Present.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Arvinitis.
Here.
Mr. Getzweig.
Present.
Attorney Austin.
Present.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Gorman.
Here.
Myself, Robyn Teal, present.
Okay, thank you. Under new business tonight, this is a public discussion, the ordinance number nineteen seventy-one, which is the water utility withdrawal from the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, which is known as the I U R C. Right now, we will do a presentation by our operations manager, Jim Gorman.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jim Gorman. I'm the Director of Operations for the town of Shererville. I have a little bit of background in wastewater, started with the town in nineteen ninety-three and been working up at Town Hall for the last couple of years. I just want to start out by saying, you know, we're here tonight to withdraw from the I U R C. Our biggest, our biggest reason for that is cost savings. Our board members in front of you tonight, they know about the water utility and most important thing for us is to save money on our utility, which is also your utility. So, that being said, I'm going to start the presentation. When I'm done with the presentation, we'll have a comment section if you guys have any questions. Just need to start, stand up at the podium, list your name and your address. And I just wanted to mention that I did have handouts with a bunch of questions that we've been getting from water rate customers and residents, and the questions and answers are on there, as well as page four lists the I C code, listing all the procedures you have to go through to withdraw from the I R C. So, I'll now start my presentation, if you don't mind. So, the reasons we want to withdraw from the I U R C. Biggest, number one, is cost savings. That's number one. Most important, like I mentioned earlier, this is your water utility. We want to save our water customers money. Costs a lot of money to be in the I U R C. Costs a lot of money for us to go in front of them to petition for a rate increase or a pass-through increase that we receive from our wholesale water utility that provides the town with water. If we withdraw from the I R, I U R C, the same requirements are in place if a rate increase is necessary. We've still got to do the same thing. We have to do a rate study. We have to, you know, show the, show the state, you know, who regulates us. That being said, local accessibility of public meetings, you know, the hearings will be here. If we have to go in front of the I U R C and we want to remonstrate against it, we have to go to Indianapolis to do that. So, that's, that's another plus for getting out of the I U R C. We have no, we have had no recent increases in our water utility other than pass-through, and that's another reason for us to withdraw, because we don't need to go in front of them because we haven't raised our rates in so long. Here, here's a list of all the pass rate increases. You can see for the past thirty years, most of those on the list are pass-through, which, which I'll explain. Pass-through is our water supplier, who is Indiana American Water. Before that, they were Gary Hope Water. When they, when they go down to the I U R C and petition for an increase, they get, usually get it, they pass it on to us, and we pass it on to you. So, that, that's what that rate increase. Since two thousand and six, all those pass-through increases, I think totaled like a dollar forty-nine per thousand gallons, in that many. So, if you can see from the list, over seventy-five percent of those are pass-through rate increases. Our last rate increase was in two thousand and five. That's the last time we went in front of the I U R C, sixteen years ago, to do a rate increase. So, we haven't had any, so that, that's why we're trying to pull out. Some common questions that we've received, does this mean my rates will increase? No. The town has no intention to raise your rates now or in the near future. Our, our water utility is solid. We've got good reserves. We have no debt in our water utility right now. We have a good water improvement fund. It's well-run, so we have no, we're not going to be raising rates anytime in the future. Why are we doing it now? Petitioning for increases has gotten more expensive than the increase itself. So, for example, in two thousand and nineteen, if you go back to the, if I go back to the last slide. Sorry. Our last pass-through increase was from two thousand and seventeen. We had another one in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, but because of that pass-through, so Indiana American needs to go in front of the I U R C to get their rate increase. They put it on us. We, in turn, have to raise and pass it through you guys. We have to go in front of the I U R C and pay, you know, every time you go, it's about ten to fifteen thousand dollars to do that. Well, by raising your rates, it wasn't worth doing it because we're going to be behind. We're, we're going to be, we're losing money. So, what we did was, we took that increase, and we took it out of our water operation and maintenance budget, and we paid it out of there. So, you never got the increase. It came out of our O and M budget. That's how we paid for that increase that they did in two thousand and nineteen, because it, it wasn't worth it. That's kind of how it, and you guys can interject or comment if you have any board members or.
Mr. Gorman, I guess I would just ask you to clarify when the last pass-through increase to our residents happened. I used to say the last few were absorbed, right? So, what?
Well, the la, just the last one was absorbed. The last one we did was two thousand and seventeen.
Right, okay, thank you.
But since, as I mentioned, from, from two thousand and eight down to now, those increases equal a dollar forty-nine per thousand gallons, because they keep track of, down, down at the state, they keep track of it, and so do we. What would, what would the town do with the cost savings? It would go back, right back into the water improvement fund. Water improvement fund is basically for, if we had valves to replace, if we have our skater system we have to upgrade, if we have to paint one of our, one of our water towers, you know, that, that could cost up to a half a million dollars just to paint a water tower. They do the inside and the outside. We have a water tower on Route forty-one that we're having to look at right now. It's got some issues. It's been there for twenty years, and, you know, anything we do to that will come out of our water improvement fund, which is a sound fund. Does the I R C regulate water quality or the financial viability of the water utility? No, it does not. I D E M does that. And water quality is the Department of Local Government Financing and the State Board of Accounts. They assess the financial viability of our utility. They make sure we, we are, we know what we're doing and we're running the utility like we have. And that's, that's a big reason why we have, you know, such a good, we, we, that's why we have no debt, because we run our utility, you know, like we should. You know, we, we have any maintenance that's done, that's in-house. We don't contract out water main bricks. We all do it in-house. We do our own repairs. We do our own replacements if we can, you know, as far as, as far as the water utility At our last meeting, which was last Wednesday, so, I apologize for that. I don't know where it's coming from. Some, some residents said, hey, well, you know, what do, what do the surrounding communities pay for water? Well, I, I reached out to the clerk treasurers across these other five communities, and this is what they pay. This is based on three thousand gallons of water. As you can see, Crown Point's the highest and Shererville's the lowest. So, we have great rates in our community. We are lowest out of those, and Crown Point gets their water from Indiana American, so do we. But, you know, I don't know Crown Point's history. They may have had a lot of water improvements. They may have had a new water station built that they had to bond for. I, I don't know. But Shererville has a good reserve. And you can see the other rates there. Dyer gets their water from Highland, who gets their water from Hammond. Munster gets theirs from Hammond. St. John are on wells that the town, that the town owns. So, they don't have, they have their own water, but their wells. This is kind of the outline of what our procedures are that we're going through to opt out of the I U R C. We draft an ordinance, which we have done. We have two public meetings in two different locations. This is the second of those two meetings here tonight. Then there's a final vote on the adoption of the ordinance, and the ordinance is effective sixty days after the adoption unless the town council receives a petition with the required number of signatures asking for the question to be put on the next ballot. Town council then notifies the commission of withdrawal thirty days after the adoption of the ordinance takes effect. That's it. That's it for the slide. So, if you have any questions or comments, I'll be more than happy to answer them or try to answer them. Does anybody have any questions? If you do, please step up to the podium, state your name and your address, please. Excuse me, before I do that, does anybody on the board have any comments before I open it up to the?
No, perhaps we could just start row by row.
Okay.
So, there's some organization to it. Maybe start with this first row and so on.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Johnson Forsky, one twelve Seronto Drive. What does the I U R C do? I'll make the example, if it, if it regulates utilities and approves rate increases, without them there, then there is no watchdog for the utility to do what it wants. Granted, we're in good shape. We've got great administration, but in the future, things can change. Is this, is the I U R C sort of the policeman of the water departments, utilities? Maybe that's my question.
Mr. Austin, you have?
Actually, there are, thank you, Jim. Sir, there are actually two bodies down in Indianapolis that have jurisdiction and regulation over water utilities that are part of the I U R C jurisdiction. One is the I U R C. That's the determinative body. They are the governing body over rate assessment and rate petitions and the like, and as has been described. But there is also the Office of Utility Consumer Counselor, who is the advocate, the state-appointed advocate for the consumer. And so, you have not only your local town water board, town council, but you also have the Office of the Utility Consumer Counselor. Presently, that, that body is overseen and administered by its executive, William Fine, who is an individual who knows this area awfully well, being from northwest Indiana. But that is the body that steps into your shoes as a consumer advocate and watches, observes, participates, files evidentiary, prefiled evidence and/or testimony as appropriate, and participates actively. So, you have a couple of bodies involved in this. They are, they are at the table in the proceeding.
One, one last quick question. You may have said it, but I didn't maybe understand it. If we get out of the I U R C and you need to do a pass-through of water, what, what is going to be the procedure? You don't go to the I U R C, who then reviews it and approves it or denies it? Explain to me again, please.
Our, our board up here would approve that. You'd still have to go through and, and state, you know, why you're, you know, we, we were put, Indiana American would put a pass-through rate on us, so we would naturally put it on the consumers. And the I U, the Indiana American Water, because they are a for-profit utility that provides water to us, they would have to go in front of the I U R C. So, if the I U R C approved that, then, you know, it's basically, we, we don't have to, for a second time, go in front of the I U R C because Indiana American already did.
And, and the last question, one more please. If, if there wasn't a pass-through, but a rate increase for the water car, whatever, a rate increase independent of a pass-through.
Yeah.
What's the procedure?
Our board members would, would decide what that rate would be based on a rate study. We would still do a rate study. We would have to justify to the state, as a state statute, we'd have to justify why we are raising those rates. And State Board of Accounts, you know, would oversee that as well as other, I don't know what other government agency, if it was the, the L G F or, we'd, we'd still have to.
Neither of those would be involved.
Yeah.
There would be audit review, however.
Audit review, yeah.
Yes.
So, does the state oversight to the local communities on rate increases?
No, that would be done with the board here, by the board.
But the state, the state reviews it?
Well, the State Board of Accounts reviews our, are, don't they, Dave? Do they?
They, no. It's a, it's fairly simple, but this requires a bit of foundation. Shererville has a needs contract for water supply with Indiana American. If, in fact, this community removed itself and processed that removal from the commission's jurisdiction, then we still have a need for water. So, locally, if we had a requirement here that we needed capital improvements, or there was a need to bond finance, or consider whether rates needed to be increased to cover debt service, or administration, or, or the like, that would be here. It would be before you. It would be with notice. It would be with the financial study and required financials that would justify, and you would be given opportunity to be heard. All of those due process rights are substantive and protected during the title aid of the Indiana Code also, so you may go to that and start with the notice that brought you here tonight, and you'll see that's what would happen.
And we do that now, even being in front of the commission.
The needs supply for this community's water utility comes from Indiana American. Indiana American is under the jurisdiction at all times. They can't opt out. They are required to deal with the commissions pertaining to rates and charges. Because we have a needs contract, we would be a participant peripherally to make sure and to assure the rate payers and the water customers that we were not, I'll use the phrase politically, being taken by the application. We know that Indiana American appears every two years before the commission in Indianapolis with a new petition. It's just like clockwork. It's better than clockwork. So, we observe and monitor that here under any condition, in, in the jurisdiction or not in the jurisdiction. It's important to do that. It was also important, and it's more history because it's relevant here, that that needs supply was negotiated by our then-water board president, Hal Slager, who's here, under which negotiation, there was a resulting twenty-five-year term of water supply guaranteed to this community. So, we, we kind of are married, if you will, to Indiana American in the sense of that supply, and with the fiduciary responsibility to observe and maintain it and hold the levels of cost for that supply appropriately. That's important, because we aren't completely leaving the I U R C, and we do not want to mislead anybody here about that. But what the purpose of this exercise and initiative commencement is, that we find and continue to look for ways to hold costs down and to administer the water utility as the fiduciaries that your water board and town council have been elected to do. There's a fiduciary responsibility for that. So, how do we hold the costs down? By being vigilant, by continuing the best, best management practices that have been developed over a long period of time here, by continuing to monitor the filings made in Indianapolis, by looking for partnerships with similar customers such as Crown Point, which has a needs supply arrangement with Indiana American, just like Shererville, and for that vigilance to carry to the next group of legislators and/or administrative staff. Hal, did I get that right?
You did pretty well. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I signed a contract for twenty-five years and used.
You've got to come up, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
I just wanted to make sure I heard his explanation. It's Joy Anderson, fourteen forty-nine London Stride, and the way I heard it was Representative Slager was instrumental in negotiating a contract for a twenty-five-year water supply with Indiana American Water. Is that what you said?
In two thousand and seven specifically for a term that would end in two thousand and thirty-three.
That's what, that's what I, I just want a clarification.
I think that's right, too, isn't it, Hal?
The date, I can't tell you. It's probably close.
David Choat, fifty-seven twelve Gold Drive. I have a couple of questions. From everything in your materials and what we've been talking about tonight, it seems like belonging to the I U R C has been financially detrimental since its inception. And I guess I'm asking, why did we wait thirty-three years to take this action? Why wasn't it done sooner?
Well, I know they've talked, we've talked about it, doing it sooner. You know, it could have been in the middle of a rate case. We've, we've come, you know, we were always under the impression that if we belonged to the commission, we'd have a little bit of skin in the game when our water supplier went in front of them so we could remonstrate against them. But it turns out, we didn't really have a whole lot of, whatever we remonstrated, it didn't have a whole lot of effect on the, the commission's decision. So, I mean, we, these board members here, they weren't around, you know, they weren't here thirty-three years ago. And, you know, we just been looking at ways to save money, and we always have, but it's just time. Now's the time.
Was there any one event that caused that to happen this time, or is this just something that's accumulated over all these years, and you're finally frustrated to the point where you want to do something?
I think the big part of it is, is we haven't had a rate increase for so long, so it's almost like we're, we're just throwing money at them and, and not getting really anything out of it.
Dave, also, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we weren't able to withdraw for the first twenty-something years of this belonging to the I U R C. I think we were only allowed to withdraw, when, when did the law change?
Nineteen eighty-eight or eighty-nine.
That's that we were allowed to withdraw? Oh, so it hasn't been a long while.
Yeah, it's been thirty-three years since we had the right to withdraw. That's why I just couldn't figure out why we waited so long if it was so financially detrimental to us. So, that was a concern I had. The second concern I have is, is does the board have the option to opt out of what the statute requires and just put this to a vote of the people on the ballot without requiring them to file a petition?
Against that, I don't, sir. The statute, the statute must be followed. That is the law, and we've signed it, of course, you can look at it, of course.
Do we know how many signatures are required on the petition?
Two percent of the last elected, the last election, the last Shererville election, I believe, you have two percent. Two percent.
Does anybody know what the figure would be, that along the numbers of how many boulders we had in this community?
There, there was roughly twenty thousand boulders, roughly, last election.
You're giving four thousand signatures.
No, no, you'd be four hundred.
Four hundred, yeah. Did the math wrong.
You'll find that in Title III of the Indiana Code.
Thank you.
Still with the first row here.
Samford Johnson, seventy-four twelve Forest Ridge Drive. Question I have is, from our neighbors that you listed on the slide, you say ninety-three percent have opted out. Which one did not?
No, that wasn't, in the, in the paperwork, ninety-three percent of non-for-profit utilities, municipal, municipal utilities have opted out.
Of our neighbors?
Since nineteen eighty-eight.
Okay, but right now, our neighbors?
None of those are in the I U R C.
None of them?
None of them. Well, yeah, none of them are, as far as I know. They, they get their water from Hammond. Hammond is not in the I U R C, so I don't believe any of them are, except for us. Is that correct, Dave?
No, Town, Town Street Lake is still, I think, is yours.
Yeah, but they weren't on the list. He was talking, yeah, he was.
Third row?
I'm Nick Prabhu, P R A B H U, one one four two seven John up the drive. Just a curiosity, Indiana American Water, where is the inlet in Lake Michigan for that water? Is that the Lake Portage坝? You are still discharged?
No, it is not. It is in Gary that supplies us our water. It's in Gary, and the, the inlet for that is about a mile out into the lake and about forty feet deep. So, when, when they did have the spill in Portage, Indiana American Water immediately shut the plant down and then served those customers from the Portage Plant from the Gary Plant. So, they have enough reserves and enough pumping capacity to, you know, they probably have a connection point at some point between their, you know, their, their piping, and so the Gary, as, as far as I know right now, the Gary Plant is running everybody that was involved with the Portage spill.
There's a US Steel in Gary as well, not, not close to the US Steel discharge.
Correct.
My name is H. Dean Johnson under the seventy-four twelve Forest Ridge Drive. My concern is that when you showed us the slide, you stated that Shererville was the lowest out of all of the cities or towns that you listed in the slide regards to our obligation. Yet, we are part of the I U R C, and those that were listed on the slide, from my understanding, that you Sherwood my brother were not. Am I correct?
Crown Point is.
Crown Point, but the rest were not.
Crown Point is a, I'm sorry, Crown Point is not a member of the I U R C, but they get their water from Indiana American where we get ours. Everybody else on the list got their water from Hammond.
And yet, their costs were higher, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
Their costs were higher.
Yes.
And they are not a part of what you're wanting us to break away from. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Okay. So, if their costs are higher and our costs are lower, why would we, other than you paying eleven, around eleven thousand dollars a year in fees to go before them, why would we break away and we're paying the least? So, could someone explain that to me? Why would we do that?
Because we want to save that money that we don't feel is being justified by being a member. Because we want to save that money that we don't feel is being justified by being a member of the commission or having to go in front of the commission. That $11,000, $15,000 a year could be put back into our utility, our, back into the water utility. That's why we haven't raised the rates, because we have a well-run utility. We don't want to raise rates, that's the last thing we want to do, but, you know,
Okay.
There will be a point where you'll...
It doesn't make, it doesn't make, to me, it doesn't make sense. If we're under their regulatory guidelines and we're paying less and for us to remove ourselves as they are removed, the slide that you showed us, is they're paying more. So, $11,000 in fees that you pay to go before them, yet we're still paying less. So, as a consumer, us, really, honestly, I could sure less that you're paying $11,000 every year that you go before them. Because what I saw on that slide is we're paying less. So often, people say, if it's not broke, what are we trying to fix?
That's why we're here tonight, that's what we want to, we want to hear what you guys have to say.
It's not broke. We pay less than every town or city that was in that slide.
Yeah.
So if we removed ourselves, see, I like checks and balance. It works, checks and balance. You stated our elected body would then become our checks and balance. That's what you told us. However, we all know how politics work. We do. And so, I like the comfort of this along with that as checks and balance. Because we pay less than you.
Thank you.
Dominic Calola, 521 Pinehurst Lane. Has the utility board ever gone to the I U R C for a rate increase without a pass through?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Has your board, your utility water board, ever gone for an increase to the I U R C, to the commission, we're trying to get away from, without a pass through from Indiana Water?
No, we have to every year, every time. We have to go in front of the I U R C anytime we raise our rates.
I think you're hearing it wrong, yes, we have twice. On the slide, there were two base rate increases that we had gone to the I U R C for. Trying to remember what years they are.
94 was one.
05.
94 and 05.
And that's without a pass through from Indiana Water?
Correct.
And the reasons for those were?
I believe infrastructure improvements, I'm assuming.
What, the pass through?
I was around back then, but I believe...
The pass through?
No, the base rate increases.
Oh, yeah, Dave was probably involved in those, I was not.
They were definitely improvements.
No.
So basically, for the past 27 years, you've only gone through twice to the I U R C for rate increases. So with the money we're saving by not having them, that goes to infrastructure.
That's, that's the goal, yeah, right, to save money for infrastructure improvements in the future. You know, we're not, we're not that set on it, we just want to try and save money where we can, so if people are opposed to it...
I think what most people are worried about is that the board or whoever's in charge here are just going to start raising rates.
There's no reason for us to do it.
Right, I understand that, because you all live here too. You're going to be paying the same amount we are.
Don't make a difference.
So, oh yeah, that's all I question I have.
Yeah, thank you. And honestly, any money that we would raise by increasing the rates, you'd have to use for the water anyways. So we would have to use it to improve water, utility, infrastructure. So there's not much other reason to raise the rates.
Wes Meter, 435 Anderson. And question number two. It says, we spend about $11,000 per year to stay under their regulation in fees and reporting requirements to the state commission. Could someone tell me what those reporting requirements to the state commission are?
It's basically how we run our utility, we have to do it anyways. I mean, we do it just so we know where our funding is, how much we need to budget for the next year. So our consultants do that. And then we have to, in turn, when we belong to them, put it in front of them. And then, we, you know, we have, we may have to hire attorneys, engineers, and financial consultants to make our case to...
What, no, you said, you spend $11,000 per year for fees and reporting requirements. Now every year, you have reporting requirements.
Yes.
And what are they?
Exactly what I just said. It's our financials. It's our financials, it's our water financials.
Your budget?
Yeah, well, not our budget, but our financials just for the water utility itself.
So how much you take in?
Yes.
How much you spend?
How much we spent on utilities, how much we spent on infrastructure, if we did.
How much you spend on utilities, what do you mean by that?
You know, from what we have to, what we, what our expenditures are and our revenue is, so, you know...
Are those public records?
Yes.
Okay.
They can be requested from the clerk treasurer's office. Unfortunately, the clerk treasurer couldn't be here tonight, but...
And my second question, my second question is, who makes up the utility board of Sheroville?
The town council does.
So the same, same people sitting up here are the utility board?
Yes.
No citizen input? Just, so whatever party is in power is actually, can make the decision.
Yes, I mean, there's a water board, utility board, redevelopment commission board.
Why isn't there some citizens on that board?
Mr. Austin?
Other than the town council members?
Those are policy calls of the town council, the elected body. That's, that's what has been here for a long time.
I realize that. I come from Dyer, and they only had one town council, the eyes on to each board. And the rest were citizens. So, your board is made up of all elected...
That's how it's done in Sheroville, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we're in that same row, the fifth row?
Joy Anderson, 1449 London Stride. I would like to tag team a little bit with the gentleman who spoke about, this doesn't make sense if it's, if it's not broken, we don't need to fix it. But what I wanted to say, or ask, is this costs $11,000 a year to belong to this commission. What's Sheroville's whole budget, annual budget for running the town?
Jim? I'm obviously not sure.
Okay, but I think we're talking, you know, I'm not very good at math, but I can throw zeros out and it's got to be over, do you think it's a million dollars?
Yeah, our water utility itself is about six and a half million dollars.
So the whole town's budget, would it be $10 million?
No, it's a lot more than that.
So $11,000 is really like five cents? In percentages? We are talking about a very tiny amount of our money that's going for this I U R C that has kept our water system, now, this is my part. Water has to be safe for all the consumers. And a pledge of 25 years, I'm old. 25 years goes like that. We're, we're really staring down the barrel of where are we going to get our water when this comes, if we still belong to the I U R C, I too think that's more plucked when it comes to renegotiating our next water needs contract. Safe water, you cannot put a price on it. And actually, this is a bargain. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Hudson, I live at 5059 West 85th Lane in the Pine Island subdivision. Regarding point nine that said, this is a job that the governing body can handle with some professional assistance. Primary purpose of the I U R C is to look at the financial inject. So who would be the financial, the professional assistants that they, you would be calling upon in the future if we take ourselves out of the I U R C?
We have a financial consultant by the name of London Witty. They have been our financial consultant for the last 30 years.
And how, how much will they cost us versus the $11,000?
Well, the $11,000, I'm not sure.
I mean, would we have to have a contract with, a different contract with them for them to take over this professional assistant?
They're already doing it now.
Okay.
They're already doing it now, they, they're the ones that put the whole water utility package together that has to be, I mean, our representative has testified in front of the I U R C.
So you've already got them on the payroll?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Jim Sweeney, I live at 1773 Sello Drive in Novo Sello subdivision. I had a couple of questions. First one is, does this ordinance apply to just the water, the incoming water, the freshwater provision that the town does?
Yes, the sewer...
Not to the wastewater treatment?
No, the sewer utility is not, is not required to be in the I U R C.
Okay. And then the second one was, I have a question regarding what Mr. Austin said. That if we opt out of the I U R C that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought you said that that second entity down there, was that basically served as an advocate for the public?
It does.
Okay, so if we opt out, we lose that advocate in Indianapolis on the I U R C? Okay. This gentleman named Corwin Olson is the executive director for the Citizens Action Coalition in Indianapolis. He's the, the executive director of the largest utility watchdog in the state. And I had sent him a note last week asking him about this ordinance. And if you, it's not very long, so if you'd like to take a minute to read his reply. He said they typically want, and of course, I forgot my glasses. They want us to opt out primarily because the cases cost money and frequently there are other I U R C rules and guidelines that they don't want to follow. Being under the jurisdiction, excuse me, of the I U R C brings more accountability, scrutiny, and transparency to the process. Yes, we have issues with the I U R C, but consumers have nowhere to go if they lose protections of the I U R C. And the books, and the books and the scrutiny that otherwise would not occur if they opt out of the jurisdiction. Utilities not under the jurisdiction of the I U R C, which unfortunately is most of the sewer and water utilities, are under complete and total control of local elected and appointed officials and the public. So, that was his reply. So, I mean, I could probably be talked out of it, but as of right now, I'd have to speak against the ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you. Last couple of rows?
My name is Tom Bonney, I'm at 428 Sandpiper Drive in Meadow River Estates. To his point, people I've talked to in my subdivision are really concerned about the loss of protection away from the I U R C, which I'm sure that you're shaking your heads about saying, yeah, we understand that. The only recourse that we have at this point is to do a petition. I also understand that you're not really in favor of that, you really don't want to see it on a ballot. I can understand your point of view too. And to get back to what this other gentleman was saying, 2% of the last vote, one of the other people that were here last week went on their phone and realized that it's only about 560 people we need for the petition in order to get it passed. So I have two questions on that. First off, you said it was 30 days after you vote on it, we have to get the petition in?
Yes.
Okay, second, when it's on the ballot, and let's say it wins, 5149, what happens then? Is this killed?
Yes.
It is?
It is.
Okay. How do we start? Is anybody going to give us any help on this, or no? Want to give us any help on starting this petition? Or what we turn, other than saying, read the bottom line of the note and go to that, get a lawyer and find out how to start with it? Anybody?
Well, I don't know, Mr. Austin, are we allowed to do that?
We had this discussion last week, Mr. Bonney and I, and I've referenced him to the statute.
Hmm, yes you did.
You certainly have the OUCC down in Indianapolis, the consumer group.
Somebody write that down, what was it again, sorry?
OUCC, Office of the Utility Consumer Counselor.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Fine is the director of that organization and their job is to assist consumers.
Okay, so we can call them and they can guide us through?
I think so.
On how to get through a petition? Okay, very good. I've got one more question. I'm going to actually throw you guys a bone with softball question. I've got a lot of my neighbors saying that, okay, so if the town can get out of the regulatory commission that protects us, that protects us, the I U R C, what's stopping them from getting out of the Lake County protection for our personal property taxes? Could you tell us why you couldn't go there and say, we want to opt out of this and raise our property taxes left and right?
There's no statute for it, there's no law.
So you can't do that?
You cannot.
Okay, and we're being protected by Indiana Constitution or something, or?
Yes.
Okay, so you cannot, as a group, vote to get out of that for our personal property taxes to raise?
That is part of a taxing and governmental organization scheme in the Indiana Code. And we all look at that as universal law, if you will, to residents and taxpayers and property owners in the state of Indiana, Sheroville included.
Okay, so you don't have the power to do that? Okay.
We do not.
Okay, that's what I want to know, I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Oh, hi, I'm, I'm, I'm very strict. I always have a lot to say.
That's okay, Jerry, mind up and say it, that's what the meeting's for.
Are you willing to say right now how you're leaning towards voting on this ordinance?
Well, I can tell you, I'm going to do what I'm hearing from the public. Whether it goes on the...
In my opinion, here, we don't want this.
I understand. So...
That's one, we've got another.
You know, I was, been thinking about this since before last week's public hearing and since last week. You know, when we make a decision as a council, you know, we want to, we ask ourselves, are we doing the right thing? You know, for our residents, and we're all residents in Sheroville. And with this, like, are we doing the wrong thing? You know, I'm not sure if we're doing the wrong thing, but I don't know that we need to do this. So I'm kind of leaning in that direction right now. The last thing I want is to pit our council against our own residents in the form of a petition. I do not want to see that. You know, I want to listen to our residents. Yes, you do elect us to represent you, you know, and to make, you trust us to make decisions, you know, for the town. I still have a bit of discernment to do on this, but I'm not so sure at this point, you know, separate from, you know, council discussion, because we haven't talked collectively, you know, since, you know, since last week. you know, since, you know, since last week, um, you know, to come to a decision. Right now, I will say I'm leaning toward no.
I, I would just say that when, when we started talking about this, and it all came about when that two thousand nineteen pass through was coming to us to decide what we were gonna do, and, and we decided as a group that we weren't even gonna petition to the I U R C because it costs more money to petition to the I U R C than we were gonna get by passing the pass through on to you guys, so it didn't make any financial sense to do that, we were just gonna eat that cost. And so, when we were looking at that, and we decided we weren't gonna do that, it was like a no-brainer to me, why are we in the I U R C when it costs us more to petition to pass through a rate than the money that we would get from passing it through? So, from a financial standpoint, I'm a conservative, I wanna save all the money I can, so I wanna, I wanna save the money for residents too, it doesn't make any sense to, to waste that money. So, it was a no-brainer in my mind to, to get out of the I U R C. I never really thought, because I'm, I'm on the council, I have all the good intentions in the world, but I don't know what the future councilmen are gonna do. I think, I trust my fellow councilmen here today to do the right thing, but like you, I don't know who the future councilmen or councilwomen are, and so, we don't know what they might try to do in the future without regulation. I've been leaning a little bit towards not voting for this because of that concern, and, and it really came from a number of residents before our first meeting. We, we had many discussions, I had many conversations with people, and, and they were very concerned right from the beginning. I, it never crossed my mind, when we were just talking about dollars and cents, here is dollars and cents, it would make sense to save the money, right? I mean, that's, that's my first goal as a councilman, but there was another side of the coin, and, and saving that money isn't worth getting out of the I U R C, if it's a concern for the future. And, and I'm, I'm here for the long haul, I'm, I'm not a, you know, short-term resident, and I'm, I'm not looking to move, I don't want it to go up exponentially here in twenty years, so...
Yeah, I'll just add too, you know, I don't wanna make, I don't like making rushed decisions, I don't like doing that. You know, we've had two hearings, two weeks in a row, you know, and then we have a council meeting next month, are we gonna vote on it? I don't know, you know, at the very least, we've gotta puff the brakes, you know, and really take in this feedback. Um, it's been consistent, it's been constructive, and, you know, it's great to see the turnout last Wednesday, we had a full room, which was great to see, this is all part of the process. You know, we do wanna hear from you, and yes, we do represent you, but we've gotta take in all the information, uh, right now, I feel a little bit rushed. You know, and if I had to vote tonight, we'd know, um, that's where I am at this point.
Mr. President? Yes, sir. Yeah, I would, yeah, I'd like to say, very similar to what Kevin just said, I've heard from at least a hundred phone calls, if not more, and I've seen probably a hundred people in the last two weeks in person, and eighty percent of, or eighty-five percent of the people I've talked to like the idea of staying in the I R C, just for the, they feel it's a protection from future, from future councils being in total control of the water rates and stuff, and they feel more comfortable, and I'm gonna stick with my, what my residents are saying, and, uh, that's how I feel, so, I, if it, it's a very big deal to them, I don't think it's worth, uh, putting it on the ballot or having a petition, and at this point, at this point, I'm going to stick with my residents, and most of the residents I've talked to want us to stay in the I R C, so, if that's what the residents want, that's, that's where I'm gonna be.
Last one at least, um, you didn't have ladies first, or last one, with, going with what everybody has said, you know, there's been, um, my first hearing of this nature, listening to what everybody had to say, all the questions that everybody asked, the concerns that they had, the emails that we've had, and I have to agree that, um, hearing what the residents want has been so important in my decision-making, because what Caleb said, you know, you look at it at first and you just go, well, it's this amount of money, this would make the most sense, but listening to you all has really made a difference for me, um, to hear it all, and it kind of, um, in a way, obviously, we're residents too, we pay the same water bill, but, um, I thought about this the other day when I got my cable bill, and it increased, and I called there, over five dollars, and I thought, I can't believe I just called you over five dollars, but I did, because it bothered me, so I understand, you know, where you're coming from when, when things increase, and worried about that, and, um, this, this situation, these hearings have been very instrumental in me making my decision on what I think is best, and I, I do believe that it is best service until what the residents are asking for. It is your town, it is our town. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I have one more thing to say with you guys. Flint, Michigan, the politicians sold that community down the river to save money. Money is not the bottom line on the water supply, it's got to be the purity of our water, because it affects all our health, and you don't find out that you're being poisoned until...
You die.
Yes, until we start having people drop dead in the community for a variety of reasons, and all of a sudden, it goes back to your water.
Oh, here, here.
The, the I U R C has no control over that though, so...
We know that.
Are there any more comments from the floor?
Just one more thing, I wanna thank, um, I wanna thank the council, because in our climate today in politics, whether we elect you or not, uh, so often, those that are elected to actually speak on behalf of your constituents, in our climate today, that's not happening. So often, the constituents say one thing, and our politicians say another, so I'm glad to hear that you guys are actually listening to those of us who pay out to voice our concerns in regards to this. I will continue to say, when something isn't broke, you don't have to fix it, and if we were among those other towns or cities paying a high rate, I could understand everything they're saying, but the proof was in the pudding, Sherwood was on the bottom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Dominic Pellella, again, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Has the I, I U R C ever denied a rate increase for the Indiana Water Department?
Indiana Americans rate increase? Yeah, I think so, we've challenged it before, that they were trying to, didn't this last one, they tried to include a bunch of, uh, improvements that were running out east towards portage into, into our portion of the rate increase, and we challenged that, and we won.
Every time Indiana American petitions the commission, they shoot for the sky, for the moon, and, and we challenge it. They end up challenged.
Who challenges the, the?
We do.
You guys do?
Yeah, we, we join, and we join other communities...
On point, on point, to Sherwood to, to file a response to their rate increases.
So, no matter what, what the Indiana Water Department has for their increase in water, whatever reasons are, you still have the right to challenge it through the I, I U R C? If we're still with you.
Correct.
Yeah, even if, even if we withdrew, we would still have that right, because their rate increase still has to go through the I U R C, it would be our rate increase that we're passing through that wouldn't have to go through.
But that would be decided from the board.
Right, that's right.
Any other?
Pat Jones, eighteen seventy-one, Fish Torn Drive. I'm wondering about this petition thing, and when you're going to be voting, and what the timeline would be, that we'd have the thirty days to get...
Mr. Austin, you wanna go through that more, please?
Wanna go back to that slide?
Well, let's just have Dave just go through it.
Yes, ma'am. The ordinance is an agenda item, at least as, uh, scheduled for the next town council meeting, and that would be second Wednesday of October. There's a notice requirement still to be met for the adoption reading of that ordinance, and that will have to be done, you're probably looking at a November timeframe to drop dead, on, on at least the way this initiative has presented itself. If the timetable changes because schedules are changed, or there's a different direction here, then we would have to re-address the exact schedule so that matched the law. The law's pretty particular about this, and we will follow that exactly if, in fact, that's the direction of the town council and water board.
Okay, so it'll be brought up in October, the second?
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday.
At seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock?
Yes, ma'am.
And then we can find out then?
You'll probably know before that.
If, if we wanted to start petitions or whatever, can we do that?
There's nothing yet.
Or get signatures?
Well, you can do, certainly could do anything you wanna do, but there would not be an, an adopted ordinance to petition against, so it would be premature probably.
Okay, okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Me, sorry, Tom Bonney, 428 Sandpiper, just for clarification, on the fourth item down, you're saying ordinance is in effect sixty days after adaptation, okay, so we don't have thirty days after that, sixty days, we have sixty days to get a petition into you after you vote on it, correct?
Dave's effect sixty days after adoption.
Right, so we only have sixty days from the time that you adopted, let's say, November first, we only have sixty days from that point to, to give you a petition, that's what I wanted to find out, we don't have the additional third. Okay, thank you very much, and one more thing I'd like to say, he is a, be as, be as it may, it's very rare to see politicians actually talk to people, and I would just like to applaud you guys, you people, for saying how right now you're feeling towards that vote or not. All of us have concerns, the vast majority of us, and honestly, ninety percent of the people that were here at the meeting last week didn't understand ninety percent of what you were saying, it was all new to us, and there were stats and figures thrown around which nobody ever heard of before. This is very encouraging and very refreshing, and I applaud you for it, and I thank you very much, that's very nice of you. We'll still fight you any way we can, but, but we want to, we want to know that we do appreciate your honesty this time around.
One more question, you know, a lot of us can still fight, and we'll still...
Yeah, exactly. All right, thank you.
All right. Mr. Schmitt? Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Austin, since this is a public meeting, um, would we be able to allow, um, a motion to, uh, to stop this process of the, of the discussion of the water utility withdrawal?
You may, this is a scheduled public meeting, it's been newly noticed in accordance with the right codes, and it is an agenda item on this agenda.
Uh, Mr. President? Yes, Mr. Schmidt? Under, under that advice, and, and that it's legal to do that, I would be willing to make a motion that, that we, um, stop the process of the water utility withdrawal from the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero. It actually is not, it actually is not tabled, it has actually been withdrawn, it's been terminated.
Terminated.
No.
No.
Terminated. No, no more. The, the people in Sherwood spoke, and we listened, and, uh, we're not going to move on it, so... May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero, this meeting is adjourned.